All right, as it is six o'clock, we will call this special meeting of the Board of Education for the Rhode Island Olivia Lake Bollian Independent School District number 2534. We'll call it to order and we will begin with at six o'clock and we will begin with the approval of our agenda.
So, Mo and Bookville?
Motion dismissed by Bookville. Seconded by Bolline. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we'll vote and we'll begin with Tracy.
Aye.
And Sandy, I see you're on Zoom. Sandy, you want to unmute and vote? All right, we'll come back to her. Brian?
Aye.
Don't see Teresa. Jamie?
Aye.
Alyssa?
Aye.
Isn't aye. Sandy? She must be busy, so.
She blinks in and out a little bit.
Okay. Hey Sandy, if you can hear me, can you turn your...
Hi, there I am.
Thank you.
It's gonna be on and off.
That's fine. I'll just, when we need you, we'll keep yelling for you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Motion carries. Recognition of visitors to our board meeting. Thank you for coming out virtually with us tonight on this beautiful night of windiness, but beautiful temperatures, so, and the sun is shining, so that is awesome. So, we'll try to keep moving along our meeting here, so if you want to go get swept away, you can. So, moving on to new business. Number one, determine the process and timeline for superintendent search. And so, we have gotten some information yesterday and it's also in front of you talking about what we should be looking for. Where we want to, I guess, maybe we'll just kind of go into the discussion topics. And so, defining this position, you know, interim versus part-time, full-time versus sharing. What are people's thoughts? Yeah, I'm talking to you guys.
I would say, just my own personal opinion is, is that when we hired Mr. Bransoy as a part-time, it was to see if we could get by on a part-time. And I just don't think with everything going on, that you couldn't do it as a part-time, personally.
Right. I've heard from, well, three people that have, that, three staff members that work here that really would like us to explore a full-time option. I think Mr. Bransoy, I think we all know, probably put in more than, more hours than his part-time contract called for. And I feel like sharing would be, you'd be looking, still, I mean, that would still be that, like, part-time, you know, person, or I think what we are looking for probably would be better off with full-time. But what are, anybody else have any thoughts? Teresa, do you? Ducking, I, around the discussion.
I would like to, maybe.
Okay.
Sorry, Jill.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just thinking, you know, before we even, before we look at some of this, we really need to be working on putting the budget together first to see where we are financially with all areas, because that's going to play a big part in where we're at also. I mean, realistically, yes, we need to, to look at something, but I think the budget should be the first thing to look at, and then if we have to cut there to fulfill this position, we're going to have to do that, because we only have so much money. So, that's just my thoughts.
Mr. Bransoy, can you speak to where the budget is at currently?
Well, right now, I met with Lindsay today. She was in the office today and she's working on it. She's working on a revised budget, first of all, and hopefully we'll have that due by the April board meeting. And then, and from that, then we go to the projected proposal, which will be at the May board meeting. You'll get the projected budget for this next year. And I don't, time-wise, I don't think you want to wait until that time to move forward with it. And I, I think what I've asked Lindsay to do is put a projection out of the administrative staff and look at how we can administratively do it without what Sandy's mentioning about with the budget. It's trying to stay within the budget line right now we've got for administrative team. And so, I think the administrative team has had a discussion with this more than once and are looking at a different proposal, different alignment within our office. And then I, I think, what I feel right now, we could stay within what we are at the current time, and so.
When, when do we know what the state has for schools or is there any final countdown as to when that'll all be done?
May 17th is their ending date for the legislative session. And if they get all their work done by then, then after that period of time, we'd be able to have it. Hopefully, we'll have more ideas than that with, and within a month of a pretty good idea of what they're putting together. And so, but again, you can project those, but it's not until the legislature passes it, which is 17th of May is their last date, so.
I know you like to watch that stuff. Do you see, like, the governor being different than what the, I mean, do they see him at different ends, like one saying, "We got to cut schools," and the other one saying, "We got to add to schools," or is it, are they somewhat sort of thinking?
The governor is very supportive of school and in his proposal, he's got an increase. The House is supportive of his proposal, probably not to the extent that the governor's at right now. But the February forecast came out very positive for the, for the state, and so that was a real plus. Prior to that, there was a lot of concerns about what public education was going to get. And so, after that, I think the governor has supported an increase and the House is supporting it at this time. And I think the Senate will, they're still putting their budget together at this point, and so, it's not really anything that's come out of there. But I think it's favorable right now for an increase, and I would hope that they would go along with their, what we've been told at this point is like 2% on the general revenue budget, so. So, I think that's a real plus, and so. But I think we're, you know, the projections of how we can staff, the recommendation for looking at a full-time position, I think, is important. And I think what I've shared before is, I think you had a very favorable audit report in December. And so, I think you need to keep going in that direction. And so, I think whoever comes into this position has got to be a focus point, working with you to continue looking at that. And, and we've got a lot of ESSR dollars coming out that is going to be a condition for the budget as far as revenue and the CARES dollars that will be coming through. But when you budget with that, you got to remember that's one-time dollars, but it's over a period of time, so that'll be supportive. And the principals and myself are looking at what reductions we can make at this point and to keep that the best we can. And so, so we'll be looking at that, looking at facilities, our needs for facilities, and then Facility Committee, they'll be having a meeting here within the next week after Easter here, looking at what we can, what needs to be done immediately and not can, we can budget for it, so that'll be coming.
And are you going, you're planning on setting up a meeting with the Finance Committee?
Yes, and then when we get that done, then we'll be meeting with, when we get the, in April, when we get the adjusted budget for this year, at that time is when we'll meet with the Finance Committee and then go through that at that time and prepare for the May board meeting, so. With the legislature, it's kind of slowed things up with COVID. It's, that's an endless story in itself. And so, with all that, it's really slowed things up.
Do we contact MSBA to get a list of superintendents, so we can?
Not at this point. I think what we need to do is, is what's that first item is determine at what, whether you're going to have a part-time, full-time, or what your plans are then. Then, that's when you would come back to them and see.
But then, okay, so also, we, do we, I mean, we need to determine at this point if we're going to pay to have someone do a search for us or if we're going to do our own search as we did last time. So, in 2012, we worked with a firm called BKV. I don't remember how much we paid them. I just, I know we were unsatisfied with their reference checks. That I'd say Sandy, Jeff would, no, Jeff would agree with me on this. We were, you know, you pay a lot of money, and I think we found out more than they gave us to go on. This last time, we did our own search using, MSBA came out and led a seminar and doing basically this, well, to say not the same, because it's not absolutely everything the same, because, but doing our own search, which costs less, of course, because you can spend, I think MSB is like $7,500 to run a search. I know others are $10,000 to $12,000, so.
I wasn't here in 2012, but I was here the last time when we did the search ourselves and I really felt like everything went really well, like the board worked really well together. You know, people, I know Melissa was really good about calling and checking references, which was really helpful. And I guess, to me, if you didn't have a great experience in 2012, I think the way we did it last time, I thought worked really well.
We can post on all of the same sites that the search firm would. We, the district did the background checks. We, we took the reference, well, Melissa took.
She did a lot of it. I'm sure I think other people did too, but.
You know, we can set up the same type of, you know, in 2012, we did, it was a full-time position, so we did. Obviously, the board had held interviews, and then we had a community student, staff team that also did interviews, and then we talked as a group, a big group, and, you know, "What'd you guys think?" You know, so that was, it feels like we can probably do almost everything. Probably not maybe to the exact same level that they do it. I should, I'm not trying to talk down search firms. I just, I think we could do it ourselves, but I definitely want input from you guys. It is a lot of work and, but it, it's also a lot of meetings, but it would be meetings even if we had a search firm. Yeah, so it would probably be the same amount, I would think. So, I definitely want input though from you guys to maybe get us what you think.
I'll make a few comments. The first topic that we were discussing, interim versus part-time versus full-time or sharing. I do believe that our district is in a position that we need a full-time superintendent based off of where we are at with our facilities and potential, a new potential bond that we need to prepare for. I feel that we would need guidance, and I know Mr. Bransoy put a lot more time in, like you guys had mentioned, above the 60% that we had on. And I just think it would be in our best interest to consider a full-time superintendent. As far as timing goes, I'm aware that there are a lot of different searches already going on currently in the state of Minnesota, and I think if we, if we wait on the timing, I think it's, it's going to be disadvantageous because the pool is already slim. There are a lot of interviews going on in different districts with, with superintendents right now. The pool is, it's going to get smaller and smaller if we wait. So, I guess I would like to proceed as soon as we can to get this position opened up and build a timeline. I guess I will comment on the search. I was a part of that and I, it was laid out beautifully from the MSBA, and we still have enough information. I think that we could do this ourselves. I don't think that it'd be fiscal responsibility to drop $10,000 to $12,000 on a search firm, but. I think we have the ability to do this successfully, so that's where I stand in those areas.
Anybody else have any?
I think too, as far as the, I think we have to just look to see what, where the budget shows us where we're at and what we can afford. I have never been on it for the superintendent search, but I feel like for as many meetings as we're going through right now, I think it'd be well worth the money spent on letting someone else do it, especially when the pool is getting tight like that. I, you know, there's a whole bunch of different candidates more than likely than 2012, and it might have just that you had a bunch of candidates that just didn't fit your criteria at that time. Just thinking, just for the time and the headache of it, just to let a firm do it and we can concentrate on our building and what needs to get done here and put our focuses here.
Well, and yes, I can understand what you're saying. Our focus is still going to be on this, whether we're doing it ourselves or if a firm is doing it. I mean, I guess, I, just in my opinion, you're going to have the same amount of meetings, but, you know, I, if we were going to do it, then I would say we'd go with the least expensive, because, you know, it's, which I think was MSBA, as far as I know, that can be checked on.
So, if we do it ourselves, it doesn't cost us anything?
Or may it cost you something, like, you know, for the, um.
Minimum, your advertising would cost you, your paper, your meeting expenditures.
Right.
But that'd be minor compared to hiring a firm. And so, one thing, you remember that the, the later you wait, the longer you wait, your pool is smaller, and so I think you need to be concerned about that. And I think that's what happened, I think, with our neighboring schools last year, where they hired an interim, and they had success with that. Both of them have been extended their, their contracts with their superintendents, so it's worked out for them, and so I think that's always a route you can take. And, and keep that in the back of your mind, is that, don't get back, you don't need to get backed into a corner. And so, but I, I think what you're saying is very true, is the situation we're in right now.
Is there going to be more schools that do part-time, you know, compared to when, when we started doing it a few years ago?
Yes, yes, there is. But I think, and I've heard, you know, the, the concerns of the district, I think the facilities is a big issue. And so, you've got to have somebody that's able to spend time on that along with, with their consultants. And then you've also got, you, you got your general fund finance that you've got to focus on. So, there's a, and there's a big, some big things that need to be, that need to go in the direction. And if you, this is a position, I think, that is very important to the district if you're going to move forward, and it's going to take time. And so, I think it's, I think it's an area that you have to be careful with of not taking a cheap route, because I think it'll burn you. That's my thought. You kind of pay for what you, what you get, and so you have to be careful with that. And I think, yeah, I think, budget-wise, I think we can put together a plan that with what we're spending in the administrative team right now, we can put a plan together to not be any more than that. And so, if you can do that with a full-time position like that, then I think, I just think it's, it's going to take a lot of time, a lot of effort to keep going in a direction you're going right now. And don't, I think Bold's a good school district, and so they need to, you need to have people lead you in the right direction, so.
Sandy, did you have something you'd like to add?
Yep. Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, and I agree with Mr. Bransoy, because right now, if, if you cheapen it up, you're not going to get good quality. So, it might be better to go with someone that knows all the ins and outs of this that could help us, which makes perfect sense. And we probably would like to have somebody that's maybe just, if we're going to, we're kind of late in the game right now, and maybe the best thing to do is just look for, if you want to do something full-time, just a temporary, until we can go and maybe see what the pool would be like next year. So, just temporary for the time being.
So, the interim?
That's just my thought.
Interim, full-time route?
Well, just a temporary, yeah, just interim, temporary.
The one thing, the one, okay, so the one thing I, I know is where they advertise are all the places we can advertise, because I did it the last time. They use EdPost out of St. Cloud State. They use the, your MASA and MSBA. Is there one more?
That would be your three main ones.
That's where they advertise, so.
When you say, "Don't cheapen it, don't cut corners," are you saying, "Don't cut corners" as far as the, the, what you pay someone to come in here and work? Or are you saying, "Don't cut corners on what you paying to have a search firm do it?"
I think what I'm saying is.
I think just saying, if we're going to have to pay a little bit more, if we have to pay a, for a search firm right now, we might need them.
I was just asking what he meant by his comment, talking about.
Just a minute, Sandy, hold on. Can you, can you hear us?
What I'm talking.
I have no idea how.
This position, I do not think is a good position to cut corners on.
So, you're not saying, "Spend more money to do a search firm instead of doing it on your own and save the money there?"
I think you've been, you've been through the search yourselves, and, and I think what Jill is saying right here is that.
Yes. Just a minute, Sandy. Mr. Bransoy's finishing a thought.
What she is saying right now, that, you know, if we could, you can do the search on your own, then you're going to save that amount of dollars, and so.
I just sounded like Sandy was saying, she interpreted what you said as, "Spend the money to get the search firm to do it, because you're in a bind or it's, time is short." And I thought, I took it as you were saying, make, don't shorten up what you're going to be able to pay somebody to come in and do this job, but.
Yep, that's, that's what I'm saying. I think that's, that's key, and.
All right, I just wanted to clear that up, so.
Good, yeah, good.
Sandy, did you have, there you go. Go ahead.
Yes, I, yeah, I lost you there for a minute. That's why I came back and I kind of lost you.
That's what happened.
Well, yeah, I kind of figured, I thought he was kind of saying, "Just don't cheapen it up and, and make sure we get the best quality," but apparently that wasn't what he said.
Well, we definitely want the best.
So, I'm just thinking, you know, I realize we can do it ourselves, but, I mean, wouldn't they have a better handle on what we're looking for or we need, or as a complete, full or part-time? Or do we, I mean, we already know what we want? I mean, we know what we're looking for?
So, search firm is going to come in, we're going to have a meeting, and we're going to talk about what we think is most important at Bold, the most important qualities. So, Mr. Bransoy, I think, gave you a, you know, desired superintendent attribute. So, we're going to go through these type of ideas and people are going to probably rank them. We need, I mean, these are things we can do too, but, you know, at this point, I mean, obviously, I just kind of feel like this is what we're looking for, you know, and.
I'll say that I, I agree that we think we need full-time. I mean, there's many, plenty of hours that Mr. Bransoy has put in. Sharing at this time, I think, would be just equivalent to a part-time as well. As far as, I mean, we, I look at the fiscal responsibility part of it, right? We know that we have, we have things that need to be fixed here. Why not take that extra 15, 20 grand and put it into things that need to be fixed here versus this? I mean, I feel like you, the four of you that are on there, you'd be great guidance counselors for the rest of us to take the steps in the process, and you know how you've done it. I mean, I've never been part of it, been part of other things, but I think that, like you said, the meetings are going to be there no matter what. Let's take that money, save it, put it to groups or whatever else needs to be done here to get us by. That's my opinion.
I think it's pretty much up to us if we think we can do it. If we're willing to take the time to do it, then we should do it. If we don't think we're going to take the time to do it and we don't want to do it, then pay somebody else to do it.
Right.
We have to be the ones to commit and say, "Yeah, we'll do it. We'll do what it takes. We'll put in the time we got put in and do it."
But even if you pay someone to do it, you're still.
You're still putting in time.
Still have time.
They're just making all this for you.
Right.
I gotta go.
Thanks.
Thanks, Brian.
See you, guys.
See you.
It's Zane, it's Brian's son's birthday today, so he is getting a pass out early here. So, I guess, I just, you know, in looking at this, looking at this a little closer, I think really what we need to decide tonight is if we're going to do full-time and search firm, no search firm, because the rest of this, you know, we can fill out a timeline of how, you know, there is a timeline right here, and we can, I mean, it's, it's an aggressive timeline. But I think it's, I think it's doable.
The steps listed there and the topics there, if you follow those steps, you can put a search together yourselves. And I think probably the key first, that would be Jill, and that she's going to have to be a collection place for all the papers, but, and this follows a guide that I've used in the searches that I've been involved in. And, and so, it's very simple and it's, it's transparent with all of everybody involved. And so, I think determine whether, and I'm hearing going full-time, which, which I would probably support that. And I'll put a budget together with that in mind. Then there's a profile there, lists, and I think you as board members need to decide, prioritize that profile, what, what is the priority there and how's that going to fit the district of Bold? And then you advertise that, then we put a, simply we'll put a brochure together. I gave you an outline of just the opening, the vacancy listing, and so we have to put that together in a brochure, put that out to MSBA and MASA, the two major ones. Anybody looking for this position or members of those two organizations. You put out what you're asking for, and so I think, I think you, you have the expertise, this group here, to do, and to do a good job. If you go through the process and you end up with not a quality person, then don't be locked into that. You can back up and say, "Okay, can we look for an interim and then go that route?" To that's. So, I think you've got the expertise with this group to, to do a good search, and they just got done, one group I know that does them, just got done with Sub East. And they, and they didn't have a lot of applicants there. RCW did one in December and they didn't get a lot of applicants. So, I, there's not a big pool out there. So, I think the quicker you can get into, get a pool to look at and then see what's there, and then move from there.
There are a lot of jobs open. If you look, I mean, I looked at EdPost. I mean, it's superintendents, assistant superintendents. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot, there's a lot of jobs open, so.
And then the other thing with the search is you got to sell your district. Because the pool is small, is short, when you hire somebody, they're looking, they're going to diagnose your district. They're going to investigate it long before. When they put in their papers, then they know whether they're interested in. When they put in their papers, then they know whether they're interested in. And then when they, when you do get them in the position of an interview or you invite them in, then you've got to sell the district. You know. And so. You people have to do that. You're you're, that's what you're elected to do as elected official is. Is to sell your district to whoever. I, it isn't that many years ago where. There was a lot of people to select from. For any position, we used to interview or have like over a hundred applicants for a teaching position. Those days are gone. And so. People will really dive into the district if they're interested and you want good people. You've got good people now and and do what you can to keep them. And so. Don't, it's not just one sided. You've got to. If you find a good candidate, then you got to go out, go after him. And and it's not. There's not an abundance of people out there. Sorry. That's who it is. But there are good ones and that's what.
I'm just feeling.
Go ahead, Sandy.
Well, I just feel like right now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just feel until I can see some numbers and some budget numbers and see where we're at. I do not feel like I can make a good sound decision on full time, part time. Or anything, I mean, we should have had that already to kind of somewhat see where we're at. Financially, because if we put money into this, we're gonna, I mean, even though you say we've got all kind of money there. I just don't feel. Confident that. Making a decision full time, part time right now, I would rather see a budget first before I make any kind of decision.
I agree. I I have to say I agree with that too. I'd like to see where we're at financially. Because we might have to do some rearranging then with the administration. Because if that's truly what you want, then we might have to look at some other. Things and how we can cut somewhere else because if that's more important, which I think a superintendent is. Maybe there's got to be a cut somewhere else.
Okay, so how, when is the, when is the finance committee going to meet? And when are, because I mean, so this could be a few weeks from now, so I guess we're going to wait. I mean, which puts us back that much further, but that's.
If you're. If your decisions go to a full time position, then I think within a week we could have a. Meeting with Lindsay, we could have a proposal together.
Okay, but. So I would. We're going to. At this point.
And then that proposal is going to impact administrative team.
To get the ball rolling, right? So.
But I think what Teresa is saying is is that's true. If you're going to have a full time soup, then you've got to. Pay for it in a in a way. And that's what we'll put together. The administrators have talked about a plan. And I think lets us revisit that. And come back to. To the finance committee with it.
Okay.
Because that's a legit question, you know.
I agree, so what are we doing?
You gotta pay. Say it again.
How long would it take for her to put that together? That budget, shouldn't she have that together somewhat already?
Yep, and then that's what I'm saying is we make the, make a recommendation of the administrative staffing. And then put the dollars to that and we could have that within the next week. But that would be if you want to go. If you're looking at a full time position.
I think we.
I don't know, either way, I want to go until I see the budget.
The budget and see it. How could we achieve that? How can we, can we for sure make that happen and how do we make that happen?
What I could.
I do want to get the ball rolling.
And I think what I would would. Come back to you with is. Looking at what we're presently. What it is presently costing our administrative team. Setting a staffing net. Would be within that amount. The the plan that we've got, it would be a reduction and we'd have to do that. And so, but I think we've got administrative staff that would. Would be successful with it.
So, just like in, okay, so my question now is. Are we, what are we doing tonight?
Well, I think you have to.
Soon can Lindsay have that put together, Dale?
Works for five schools. I think she was trying to get something done today, but. Jill can answer that better.
I. What I, what I'm. I'm putting this scenario together that. We are looking at the administrative team to making the reductions. So that you remove my position. In the district and you fill it with a full time superintendent. You can have a team put together. For about the same of what we're spending right now for administration. That's what I think we could put together and have next week. The total budget, there's too much for revisions that we're we're working with right now. We've got a group that we're just negotiating with right now and we got their. Proposal this past week. And so that is an impact, so. I'm pushing Lindsay about as. Quick as I can and. Like Jill said, she's working five districts, that makes it hard. And she's a keep in this game. But if I could do that. For you. Would you be comfortable moving forward then with the full time position?
I would.
That's what I, if we could do it within the same dollar amounts that we're spending right now.
I am.
There we go, do that?
I would like to see the numbers first.
Oh, you're talking. I would like to see numbers too because I don't like making a decision on the fly of where we're at now because that doesn't tell me nothing. Where we're going to be at. Then in the next year. I mean, we could, we could use all the numbers we have right now, but there could be something that we're not seeing. Or we're not going to have and then what? And then we made the decision and now. Now we're out there for it.
If the projected budget comes in May, we do not have time to fill those empty positions. We we have to have this built. And this is, this is, we need a leader, we need somebody to come in and and guide us and. That's why I believe that timing is critical. I I just, we have to move forward. And based off of what Dale said.
Maybe we should share with the district.
With our school right now with our facilities. I believe it's important to have somebody here.
Yeah, I think we need a full time.
We talked about, Sandy, we had talked about the whole sharing thing and it. I guess, you know, people talked about that it's. It's basically part time again. So. I I don't know with what we have going on.
Well, that.
We can't get someone, I mean. Like I said, Mr. Bransway has put in more hours than the point six he was hired for. Uh, I I just. I feel that we have more going on here than part time will. Reasonably accommodate.
Well, realistically, when he's gone, who takes over? Who who takes over now when he's gone?
Well, if there's a superintendent, on contrast, in July first, the superintendent coming in would take over.
No. No, now Jill, okay, when Mr. Bransway is gone now.
He's.
But when he's not. When he's not in the school, who takes care of things at the school? When he's physically not there. Which is who?
Administrator, are you?
Just let him answer, please.
The administrative team works at that and I'm readily available by text, by by. Phone and and so. And so they take part of that load. The other part of the load is taken over by the office staff. And so.
Who's on that administrative team?
I don't.
Who's on your administrative team? Who is that?
Who is it?
Who's all on that administrative?
It's Mr. Benton and Mr. Benson and Mr. Flan.
Given that.
Okay.
Not all schools are looking for superintendents right now, obviously. So with Lindsay, could, is there a? Any way that she could put together things? Could that budget come up even quicker just because of the situation, like we can be put ahead so that the finance? Committee can look at it like, like you said, next week or in two weeks even, so we can get those projections ahead of time and start looking at that. So we can decide if that's where we need to be.
I think the problem with that is always that they might not be looking for a superintendent, but they have other things going on. You know, like, for example, G F W, I watched their. Um, meeting a couple of weeks ago and they have like. Where they're cutting and stuff and so she's got to be a part of that. So I don't think that we would be able to take precedence, if you will, because. Who knows what other things that those schools have going on, the five of us.
And that's. Another area that I think the district has really pulled back on too because of finances is that herd position. You know, and I've tried to get her to be here two days a week. But she's with five. Districts right now, and so that's that's not a possibility. Uh, we've got the opening now for what is for Jody's position. And so we're going to see what that'll bring in, but again, it's tough. To get that position filled. For the smaller district like ours, they're. The type of person you'd want in that position, you're never going to be able to afford if you can find one. They're scarce and. So I think I would. Gamble or would would like to have that position increased, but that's not going to happen.
That's kind of, she, that Jody would be like the full time, is this really Lindsay's assistant?
Yes.
Well, if we have to keep making cuts like that, maybe we should also look into a shared superintendent too, as much as we probably don't want to, maybe because we're going to be forced to. Share one with another district. I'm just saying.
If finding a, finding a district that would be willing, you know.
Exactly.
Because. Obviously, you probably want them in close proximity, right? I mean, so. That would take time as well.
But you know, there are superintendents that do, one superintendent does take a. Care of a bigger school with larger numbers than what we have, so it's not like it's not doable.
Probably with assistant superintendent.
Start looking at that role because. Like we're all, already we're sharing Lindsay with five, there's five districts that are sharing her, so.
Right. If we could find, if we could find a full time business manager that we could afford. I mean, obviously, that would be.
Ideal deal.
I know, we're kind of like deviating off the topic here, but without talking about the business manager, but. But I mean, yeah, that would be totally ideal.
So maybe we should keep that in the basket too.
Right.
How would it be if I would go back to the administrative team and put together a proposal? Uh, with dollars amounted to it and bring it back to you. Within a week. And and what I'll do is take the current staffing, we'll look at that, see where we have put everybody and come back with that. Um, that's going to be the quickest turnaround. If you're going to wait for Lindsay to get a proposed budget together, that's going to be me. Because there's too many things in school finance that are unknowns at this point. We're still dealing with unknowns from this past year. And if anybody knows anything about school finance, every year you're dealing with three different budgets. And it isn't a matter of ordering this. And you sell it for this. That's, doesn't work in public education in schools. Because we've got changes every single day. And and so I. When it's. It's easy to be critical of a business manager, but be careful because it's very complex. And so. It isn't easy to sit down and say, well, you've got X number of students, you've got this number coming in. And this is your balance. It's not that easy, there's too much to it. So. But I think at this point, that would be my recommendation is is for you to tell me to go back to that administrative team. Let's take a look what we've got. See what we can put together numbers. And get that back to you.
Okay, I will make that motion to direct Mr. Bransway to go back to the administrative team and put the numbers together. And that you should put. We need to meet again and which. Will be after April, which is kind of what I, after Easter, which is kind of wanted in the first place, but it, we. Were supposed to meet tonight with, for our M S B A training and we were not able to do that, so it. I just thought we might as well get this ball rolling. I'm looking at April 12th, but I've made the motion. I would like us to meet April 12th, it would, it would work on.
Can we do before that?
I've made a lot, I don't, I don't know about everybody else, but I've made a lot of meetings ready for next week, so I'm not sure. And I want them, and if you can get the finance committee. Together, maybe in the next week, would that work? Mr. Bransway?
Who's on the finance committee?
I am.
I think Sandy is too. So. That might.
Yep, I am.
Okay, that might. Pushing it out to the 12th might give us some extra time for them to meet as well. Which I agree it should have. Happened, but. So I will discuss with Joy, though I did make a motion on that.
I'll second it.
Motion is made by Hanson, seconded by Boleen. Any just further discussion or any questions on that?
Are we going to schedule April 12th?
If we can, if it works.
It works for me.
Possibly.
Okay. Yeah, still have both, both options available, of course, so.
What time?
Seven probably would be best. This is just at six because we already have a training scheduled for six, so I made it six to, as a special meeting, which this one will be as well.
You're planning on April 12th?
April 12th, seven o'clock.
And that's board?
Yes. Yep. It'd be a special board meeting. Yep. Okay, so with that, motion is seconded, any further discussion? Hearing nothing, we will vote and we'll begin with Sandy. Sandy, you want to vote?
Hi. I'm, yep, I'm here.
Tracy.
Hi.
Teresa.
Hi.
Jamie.
Hi.
Melissa.
Hi.
Also, I, motion carries and the next thing up on our agenda is to adjourn. I will also make that motion.
Seconded, say.
Seconded by say it all and. Discussion to adjourn, so we will vote and we'll begin with Teresa.
Hi.
Melissa.
Hi.
Jamie.
Hi.
Brian is not here, so don't call his name. Tracy.
Hi.
Sandy, for adjourning.
Hi.
Okay. And I myself, I have an eye, motion carries, six forty nine.
Are you on the finance?
Thank you all for coming.
From Sandy.
Yeah.